All right, ladies and gentlemen, the hour of four o'clock having arrived. If we could ask you all to please take your places, bring the chambers to a quiet hush. We'll ask the board members to take their places at the dais. I know Supervisor Wasserman stepped out for just a moment, but he will be right back. And we are at item number five on our agenda, which is to reconvene into open session. And that having been done, we will now go to item number six, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm going to ask all of us to stand as Supervisor Ken Jaeger leads us in the pledge. Supervisor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to item number seven, which is to consider recommendations relating to certificates of appreciation, commendation, and proclamation. And we will ask the clerk to please display the voting panel on our screens. She has done that, and I'm going to ask for a motion, which we have from Supervisor Ken Jaeger, and a second, which we have from Supervisor Cindy Chavez. And we're going to ask all four members of the board who are present today to please vote on their screens. That has occurred, and so now that it has, we will ask clerk to please display the results overhead. And the motion carries on a four to zero vote. That takes us now to item number eight, which is to present some of these commendations and proclamations. And I have the pleasure of presenting the first of those, so I'm going to walk up to the podium. And now I'm going to ask if Lee Rauscher and Megan Robinson from the Santa Clara Valley Open Space Authority could come join me, please, so that they may receive a commendation celebrating the Santa Clara Valley Open Space Authority's 25th anniversary. And let me say to both of these good women, I'm so glad that you could join us today. Thank you. For those of you who do not know this brief history, it was back in 1993 that our county, along with the cities of San Jose and Campbell and Santa Clara and Milpitas and Morgan Hill, all came together to join the Santa Clara Valley Open Space Authority. And from the very beginning, 25 years ago, the mission has always been to conserve our natural environment here in the valley. And that, of course, has been done by protecting our open spaces and natural areas, working farms and ranches for future generations, and frankly, connecting that nature to people here in the valley as well. So I think as we celebrate and acknowledge that 25th anniversary today, helpful and important perhaps to just look at a couple of the metrics by which we can measure the success of this effort over a quarter of a century now. We have, as a result of the good work of the authority, four preserves, more than 8,600 acres and 20 miles of trail access in those preserves. And in addition to that, there are 15 additional sites that preserve more than 17,000 acres. Now, I think to try and put that in some context that we can all understand, another way to put it that might be a little bit more helpful is to say that the Open Space Authority has already, in just these last 25 years, preserved more land than is contained in the incorporated communities of Santa Clara, Campbell, and Milpitas, three of its member jurisdictions. That, of course, is just in the first 25 years. I want to be very clear, as we give the commendation today, you're not done. And so we're going to say good for you and thank you and congratulations. I think most of you will perhaps not yet have heard, so I want to underscore the fact that the authority is celebrating with the community on Saturday, including, I believe, lunch and luncheon festivities planned. Please know that we here at the board want to wish you every success. We want to thank you for your work to date, and most importantly, perhaps, we want to implore you to keep up the good work for another 25 years and beyond and beyond and beyond. So let me ask, would either one of you like to say a word before I grab the proclamation for the ceremonial photo-taking? All right, please, please do. How about a round of applause for 25 years worth of good work?
Thank you very much. Megan and I are very honored to be here today to receive this commendation on behalf of our board, our general manager, Andrea McKenzie, and our colleagues back at the Santa Clara Valley Open Space Authority. The authority's partnership, as Supervisor mentioned, really dates back to our beginning and before our beginning. The county's 2020 Preservation Force, a 1985 report, actually was a concept that became the open authority in 1993. And after 25 years and nearly 25,000 acres of open space property, we're very pleased to celebrate our partnership today with Santa Clara County. Some of the highlights, Jackson Sisters Ranch, Seven Oaks Hill Conservation easement, Coyote Highlands, Coyote Canyon Conservation easement. That last project was about 2,700 acres, but very important that it linked about 105,000 acres in a contiguous link network. Each of these purchases ensures that the property will remain public open space in perpetuity, and we are deeply grateful for your partnership in doing that. Amongst the property, we also do educational partnership. We're very proud to do that at many county parks, bringing the nature into our urban spaces and educating students and learners of all ages. And lastly, our partnership is deeply valued in the Santa Clara Valley Agriculture Plan and its associated task force. So Andrea always likes to share a proverb, which I think is very timely for today, and that is, if you want to go fast, go alone; if you want to go far, go together. So together, we have gone very far, and we thank you very much for this partnership and recognition.
Thank you. Bear with us as we turn our backs for just a brief moment. We're going to get a photo here, and I'm definitely not the one who should be in the middle. And let me just ask that we give one more round of applause, because perpetuity is a very long time. And so as you enjoy the open spaces in this county, I hope you will realize just how much we have to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we turn now to Supervisor Ken Jaeger for our next presentation. Supervisor, thank you so much.
Thank you, President Smithian, and I'm going to be joined by City Lights Executive Artistic Director Lisa Malette with a very special commendation. Come on in. We make it difficult for everybody. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
I'm sure many of you are aware of City Lights Theater Company, one of the great theater companies in downtown San Jose. It was founded in 1982 as a collective focused on producing challenging offbeat works by local playwrights. They just completed their 35th season, which is pretty amazing, and they remain committed to new works, having produced one world premiere play and two world premiere adaptations since 2008, with another new play scheduled to premiere during the 2019-2020 season, which is coming up. And people can get their season's tickets probably online already. Since 2001, under Lisa's direction, City Lights has become one of the pillars of downtown San Jose's art scene, with a total audience exceeding 11,000 annually, with more than half of those people under the age of 45. City Lights holds an annual Lights Up Three Days of New Plays Festival every spring that focuses on works from artists in Santa Clara County and the surrounding region. City Lights also allows dozens of local actors and actresses, both amateur and professional, to showcase their talents every year, including our own Dave Leon from the Clerk's of the Board's office, who was one of the stars of the recent production of Lin-Manuel Miranda's In the Heights, which was a great performance. It was a lot of fun, and there he is there, who might even sing a few bars, I don't know. City Lights generates more than $1.4 million in economic impact annually, and they have a local nonprofit partner for every production, which is just outstanding, including organizations such as History San Jose, Silicon Valley Pet Project, and Vegolution Community Farm, which I'm a big fan of. Downtown San Jose is a tough place often for performing art groups. San Jose Rep Ballet, San Jose American Musical Theater, San Jose have all gone away in the last decade, which is a real shame. That's why we are so lucky to have City Lights Theater Company. Every year, they tug at our heartstrings, make us laugh out loud, and challenge us to think, often all in the same show. So congratulations on your 35th season, and I'm looking forward to the upcoming God of Carnage at the start of the 36th season. So congratulations, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Want you to say a few words?
Thank you, thank you so much. We're very honored to receive this commendation and be a part of this wonderful community. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for supporting the arts in your community. And it's not just City Lights, and it's not just live theater, they're all connected. So if you go to the museums, or you go to the opera, or you enroll, you pay extra to enroll your kid in some lessons or classes, or let them do the drama club, it's all part of the fabric of our arts and culture here, and it's all lifting us up, all of us, in every way. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for this honor, and also just for supporting the arts in our community. Thank you.
We're going to take a picture. We're going to stand right here. Thank you again, and please, one more round of applause for the good work of the City Lights Theater Company. And for the third and final commendation and proclamation, before we go to our certificates of appreciation, I'm going to turn to our county executive, Dr. Jeff Smith. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have Cindy Smith join me up here on the dais? No, we're not related. Nice to see you. We know everybody used to be named Smith until they started sinning, then God made them change their names.
I thought it was the other way around.
Cindy retired from Santa Clara County Facilities and Fleet after dedicating 21 years of outstanding service to the Fleet Management Division. She started her career with the county in 1997 as a scheduler in the fleet unit. After successfully training in the motor pool staff and excelling in her position, she was promoted to logistics supervisor in 2013. That's a tough job. Cindy provided excellent leadership in her role by recognizing hard work and dedication, mentoring her staff, and encouraging education and growth within the county. Not only did she support all county departments through the fleet user group sessions, she conducted annual audits to ensure each department had access to safe and reliable vehicles. Recognizing the importance of county support in emergency and disaster situations, she was an active member of the logistics team in the Emergency Operations Center. Cindy enjoyed going above and beyond her normal job duties with her contributions to the EOC, the Employee Excellence Committee, and the Organization of Fleet Employee Events. Thank you, Cindy, for 21 years of remarkable service.
Thank you.
Good job.
And before you step away, we have another photographer, and we're going to welcome him up.
I'm good. Actually, my friends probably wish I would, so.
Okay, why don't you say something?
I just, it's been really a pleasure working for the county, and the opportunity that I was presented, when I started here and promoting, and just everybody that I've met throughout the county through so many departments, it's been, it's been a great, a great ride here with the county.
All right. Supervisor Chavez is taking on what I believe we refer to as other duties as assigned. Great. And if you'll stay put for just one more moment. And could you please provide one more round of applause worthy of 21 years of service? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith, I believe you're going to handle item number nine, which is the presentation of certificates of appreciation for our Employee Excellence Award honorees.
Yes, I am. So another exciting time to honor a few of our employees. Tonight, we have nine employees to represent the other 20,000. These nine were selected by their departments and supervisors for their outstanding, excellent additions to the county over many years. So will the Employee Excellence Award winners, please join me up here to my right and my left in your chairs. Rounds of applause. I think we do. Over here? Just to confuse you. Okay, so what we're going to do here is I'm going to call your name, you're going to come stand by me while I read a little bit about you, and then I will turn you over to the president behind me, who will have your commendation and your award, then come back and sit in your seat. Meanwhile, everybody in the audience scream and yell and don't throw things, or at least hit them. And then after we've gone through everybody, we'll take some pictures. Okay? So not that this order was adjusted, but our first award winner will be Sandy Yavino from Budget Operations Manager. Sandy is our Budget Operations Manager. She's from the Office of the Executive, OBA. She's been with us for 15 years, and if anybody ever wonders how the budget gets done, it's because of Sandy. So for all that time, she's made sure that we have a smooth budget, recently, a very positive budget, and she's the person that works to make it happen, along with a bunch of other people. But she coordinates it all. So Sandy came to OBA six years ago from the Office of the County Council, and prior to that, she was in the County Sheriff's Department and Facilities and Fleet. As the OBA Budget Operations Manager, she has helped raise the standard of budget analysis, program evaluation, fund management, and quality control. Everyone who works with Sandy appreciates her knowledge of county policy, budget history, and government accounting. Subordinates and superiors alike can count on her for accurate information and solutions to most of the, some of the most vaccine problems and budgetary issues. I can attest to that. Sandy is an approachable leader who goes above and beyond her role to ensure that OBA and the departments are successful. Despite the demands and deadlines for her role, she's always willing to assist staff with her work and help them think through problems and arrive at solutions. It's not a rare time to find a line forming outside of her office. It's not a rare time to find a line forming outside of her office seeking for help. I'm usually at the back of the line. I'm sure that that's what causes her to shift some of her work to the nights and weekends. Congratulations, Sandy. Great job. Thank you very much. Next is Gabriel Gahal, also called Gabe. So Gabe's an Information Systems Analyst in the Office of the County Council Administration, has been with us for five years. Gabe is a stellar performance in the IT group. He is integral in assisting and guiding staff in their use of unique software platforms. He attends trials and will assist attorneys in the courtroom so that they are confident in their use of the technology in their presentations. Embracing innovation and improvement, Gabe created significant long-term savings by establishing the on-premise version of our e-discovery software. That's the software which helps do the discovery during litigation, sorry. He is an internal resource, quickly learning new software and hardware, training others to effectively use the new programs. Gabe has been instrumental in converting all county council officers to Office 365. That must have been hard. They didn't want to give it up, did they?
No, they enjoyed it.
They enjoyed their old one. We're so mean, we made them give it up. Handling software upgrades and coordinating telecommunication functions are a big part of his job. He possesses outstanding interpersonal skills, and his dedication and depth of knowledge are always an asset to the county and to the Office of the County Council. Congratulations, Gabe. Good job. Thank you very much. Kim Oberst. Ah, there you are. Nice to see you. Kim is a Supervising Account Clerk II in Facilities and Fleet Department in the Fiscal Division, and she's been with us for five years. Kim began her career in fleets and facilities. However, and throughout her years of employment, she has demonstrated skills and professionalism that go well beyond her job title. Kim has contributed to improving and helping the Fleet Department grow and provide innovative changes in training. She demonstrates her integrity, efficiency, and concern for fiscal responsibility through her considerate nature, her great research, and her analysis. Kim voluntarily goes out of her way to help others and does so with a positive attitude, which is one of the many invaluable traits that make her an excellent lead and an outstanding employee. Some of Kim's favorite things to do include laughing with friends and family. Good. Taking impromptu road trips, being creative, and watching movies. She loves her home hockey team, the San Jose Sharks, and is looking forward to the final chapter of the TV series Game of Thrones. That's great. She lives by the saying, "Do all things with kindness." Congratulations, Gabe. Where's Jeff Draper? Our Mike Snow. We have a lot of people with connections to Fleet and Facilities this month. Okay, good. Miguel is a deputy with the Office of the Sheriff in the Deputy Bureau and has been with us for 16 years. During his tenure, he has embodied the values that we look for in our deputies. He has commitment to the community, pride in service, and professionalism in the duty. Miguel is a member of the several specialized teams, and his calm demeanor has led to positive outcomes in very stressful situations. He's a highly motivated individual who wants to enhance the service and continuity of the Custody Bureau through professional development. Most recently, he organized a two-day, no-cost training course at Bellarmine High. First responders from around the Bay Area converged on the high school for a day of lecture and a day of scenario-based training, complete with 40 students and adult volunteers. The training provided a forum for first responders and students to discuss community concerns. On a personal note, Miguel is the loving husband to his wife, Marcella, and dedicated father to two children, Miguel III and Jasmine. His favorite vacation destination is the Dominican Republic. Congratulations, Miguel. Great job. Thank you very much. A gentle giant. You have to be to work in custody. It's a hard job. Veronica is a Social Work Coordinator I in Social Services Agency in the Aging and Adult Services Quality Assurance Division. She's been with us for 18 years. Veronica began her career at the Children's, as a Children's Shelter Counselor, promoting through the ranks to become an In-Horm Support Services Social Worker II. While at IHSS, Veronica conducted home visits and needs assessments for our most vulnerable clients. Her attention to detail and solid knowledge of policy and regulations made her a perfect fit for the Quality Assurance Social Work Coordinator position. Currently, she supports three case management units that conduct internal case and home visit reviews. Through the years, Veronica has taken a leadership role and responsibilities for many issues. She volunteered to be part of the Emergency Response Team, participated in the Business Process Redesign Team, and many other things. She's also been a member of the Integrated Document Management Team and the Coordinated Care Initiative Task Force. Veronica is a reliable and professional employee and has shown great commitment and service to our clients and to our program. Thank you very much, Veronica. Fanny Rackover. Did I do that still right? Fanny is an epidemiologist II with EMS Agency, has been with us for four years. She is a quiet, professional epidemiologist who strives for excellence in each project which she undertakes. She is an advanced, professional-level research expert. Fanny has, was instrumental in providing supporting data for the Community Paramedic Proposal and the IRB Submission Packet. She did the statistical analysis, implied, and applied the statistical tools to our annual report, and established the dataset and study methodology to evaluate the stroke triage criteria. You did that? That was hard. It was. The board and the stroke advocates asked us to come up with a new protocol. That's wonderful, you did it. Wonderful. Her overall goal is, when I have a stroke, to make sure everybody follows the criteria. Her overall goal is to assist staff in evaluating the EMS system and the population health status of the county. The purpose of her work is to interpret, prepare, and analyze findings, which will improve care across the continuum of county residents. Her work is critical for the success of the EMS agency, as the data provides the necessary information for achievement. Fanny exemplifies the county mission, and she's a great asset to the department. Thank you very much. You know those pharmacists, always playing around with drugs. Ann is a pharmacist at the Milpenis Pharmacy and has been with us for 17 years. Dr. Din is the embodiment of what this award represents. Prior to her pharmacy career, Dr. Din worked as a medical assistant, which sparked her love for promoting excellent patient care. Throughout her years at the county, she has taken exceptional care of her patients and has become an integral part of the clinic staff. Ann has developed great working relationships with the various providers, helping to ensure continuity of care. Patients are always her highest priority. Dr. Din sets very high standards for herself and her team. Her endless energy and strong work ethic inspire all to strive to the level that she has set. It's truly a gift that we have such an excellent pharmacy practitioner among us that we can always rely upon to tell the truth to patients and to be a mentor, friend, and colleague. Outside of work, Ann loves to spend quality time traveling with her family and friends. This year alone, she was, she has traveled to Sedona, New York City, Niagara Falls, Japan, and Cancun. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ari, next year, don't let her travel so much. We need to keep her here. No, just joking. Jeanette is Associate Management Analyst with Planning and Development in their Administrative Division. She's been with us for four years. Jeanette is responsible for Human Resources, Facility Management, and Analytical Reporting. Did you help with the redesign? No. Yes. She did it. Did she do it?
Yes.
Okay. It's very pretty. Everybody go up and take a look. Very client-centered. With a 50% increase in the department and zero increase in the workspace, Janet was, has worked miracles to create a new work area to accommodate staff. She's a shining example of an employee embracing change, constantly learning and providing the best service to our patients, our customers. Janet implements the department's vision of going paperless by creating electronic personnel files for each employee and digital copies of hiring packets for managers. In her responsibilities as the Human Resources Coordinator, Janet demonstrates fast mastery of all personnel-related systems, including PeopleSoft, NeoGov, Data Watch, and more. Janet serves as a subject matter expert on Cronos. Ooh, that's hard to do. Did that damage you to try to learn it? I, I just ignore it. Hopefully it'll go, hopefully it'll go away. She was key to the successful transition for the Cronos Employee Self-Service Platform, providing answers, support, and scheduling training. Janet is the loving wife of Gerald Souza and the mother of three beautiful children, Jeremy, Julia, and Jacob. Nothing brings her more joy than spending time with her family and bringing happiness to those around her. Congratulations, Janet. Mark is the Capital Projects Manager III with Parks and Recreation Construction Services and has been with us for 30 years. All right. So he's responsible for all of our, creating all of our parks. Mark has been here a long time, they say. His greatest accomplishment to date is the restoration of the historic Casa Grande in Amadon Quicksilver County Park, which, if you haven't seen, is just absolutely beautiful, fabulous. This $5 million project restored the home back to the glory years of the late 1800s, when the Red Rock Cinnabar used during the Gold Rush was mined from the hills. Mark provides a great value to the county with his project management skills. He addresses concerns of everybody involved in many ways. He sets an excellent example, understanding the county's best practices as it relates to the use of contractors and consultants. By fully supporting and adhering to these guidelines, Mark exhibits a strong sense of honesty, integrity, and transparency. He encourages staff to take initiative and to provide creative answers to problems that come up. He exhibits flexibility with his staff, even going so far as to cover their projects for them while they're on vacation or extended leave. Mark is retiring in November, sadly, as, and is leaving a legacy that few will be able to match. Mark is a die-hard, Grateful Dead fan. All right. He looks like one too, right? Where's the tie dye? Close.
It's a Jerry tie.
It's a Jerry tie. And has a wicked sense of humor, something I'm sure that his wife Peggy of 31 years appreciates. Congratulations. So now, a big round of applause for everyone. Isn't it great hearing their stories? They're all so inspiring. Means that every Tuesday, first Tuesday, I show up at the board meetings all happy. I said I show up happy. No.
For about 15 minutes.
For about 15 minutes. No. It's exciting to hear the great stories of these fabulous people, just like all of our employees, who work with dedication to make sure that the clients in our county, the citizens, have the very best community they possibly can have. And indeed, they're successful because we do have the very best county, and it's all because of them and you. So as we turn our backs to you, more rounds of applause. We're gonna take pictures. Thank you all very much, and without objection, the meeting is adjourned.